Good evening. Anybody on the board of Rio Grande City UIC? Order. It is Thursday, sorry, Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. It is 6:30 PM. We have General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary. The purpose of the company and forum and the way we're going to take a roll call. Mr. Jay Peña, President. Mr. Basilio D. Avila Jr., President. Mr. Noe Estadio, President. Mr. Tizanis Sova, President. Mr. Johnny Pope IV, President. President, President, President. Thank you. Elisa Velasquez Jr., President. And I'm sorry, Mr. President. We do have a forum. Section two, ready to leave. Anybody open the ready to leave?
... America, and every public who wishes us one nation, America, delivered for liberty of the world.
Thank you, Mr. Peña. Section three is a full of minutes. Assistant of the public meeting, 2/18/22. Regular meeting of 2/18/22. Special meetings, July 8th, July 1st, August 9th, and October 1st, 2022. Motion to discuss on section three. I saw motion, Mr. President. There's a motion from Mr. Avila, his second to have motion. Section three of the last case, all the favors, no city five are registered in. Same sign, motion carries. Section five of the form. You have a, any on section four for the public forum? Thank you so much. Section five reports in information. I think the first one that we got for the forty purposes is item twelve, which report our RSSP, three SY, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-two. I have, again, I, I'm sorry, I have, gave me the wrong name. Item twelve, the report.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña Superintendent. I'm here just to report on RSSP, which is the recipient's school program that we're part of. We're in cycle three. So this is a community presentation, just to know as to what are the initiatives and what we're doing. So it will take one very long time. So during our conversation today, we're going to talk about the opportunities that RSSP has offered for Rio Grande City UIC, the goals that we've chosen and the focus areas for our program, and the data that we analyze so far for this school year. And also, I'm going to discuss how RSSP aligns twelve different initiatives that we have in our district. So just really quickly, what is RSSP and how to go over the focus. Our focus here is to accelerate early and supportive learning environments, which is reflective on improving assessments and outcomes for our school district. To achieve this, RSSP is up to different school districts, so we do have a technical assistance provider, which is Mutamba and Inside Education. And with those supports, research, strategic planning, we're ongoing continuous improvement, supports to identify and apply research-based learning strategies, accelerated strategy. So a part of our team have our superintendent, Mr. Raul Povina, our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, Elsa Morris, myself, the director for accountability and assessment, I am the RSSPD. We have Ms. Basise Capone Solvo, our T-class director, Deidre Fallow. We have Ms. Swailete Katsasa, School Improvement Director in CCSI. And we have Mrs. Nani Sainz, our executive school administrator, as part of our team. So on this process, we set up our team, we did a little bit of data analysis, we created a period of action, we supported, we're supporting and enabling also our goals and measurement and implementation plan. So what have we learned from the qualitative data? As you can see, I'm just going to present to you really quickly, because our focus will be during grade eight grade. So I look at our focus here, I'm giving you some data from our spring assessment, which is our reading and math scores, as you can see on the red part. We have a higher need in mathematics, so that's the area of our focus for this school year with the RSSPD. So what have we learned from qualitative data? With our data, Fallow, we've been doing some surveys, we've been also, survey teachers, parents, students, as far as what it is that our school district offers. As you can see, what are the subjects that are most in conflict when it comes to that our kids need extra support and so do our teachers. For the most part, they mentioned all the subjects here, including science, math, RAS, social studies, and they said that they have a conflict. They're confident and they also need extra support when it comes to these particular subjects. And do we currently, do current researches and materials support effective teaching and learning in the school community? And the teachers responded very positively towards curriculum or materials being repeated. You mentioned since attendance issues, that's the one issue that they did find that they have had trouble with this past school year. And it affected the implementation of their school sequence in the core area of instruction. And these interactions, that's why they identified as making it difficult, plus get to the next level or get to a deeper engagement in the curriculum. So our areas of focus, our areas of focus for RSSP, based on the data analysis, stakeholder input, and decisions for the initiatives that RSCIIS will be implementing this coming year, our team decided to opt to a high-level performance management support through RSSPD. And what this means suggests that we're, the support is going to be given from these key providers to the district, at district level, or all different initiatives that we have in place, so that we'll be able to support all our students and our teachers with all the new high-quality instructional materials that we're providing for them. So we had to come up with wildly important goal for priorities, as you can see, the number of third grade students at the focus campuses, scoring meets and above on math star will increase by five percent by May 2020. We said, we said a low realistic goal, because that's what we want to do, so we want to make sure that they improve again at the meet level, and at the meet level, meaning that they're at grade number above. Okay, so our priorities would be instructional coaching, which is who are the three-plus grant, professional development, which we do provide, and ongoing progress monitoring and adjusting practices based on student data and math measures. So on our first goal, instructional coaching, so the educator capacity is just beginning here, by the end of December, we're setting the goal that sixty percent of our coaches will report gains and knowledge and skills around coaching and lesson delivery. When it comes to fidelity, by the end of December, sixty percent of our teachers are receiving regular coaching on their instructional PLC implementation. And this outcome is by the end of December, as we have our students will improve on their second six-week checkpoints from the baseline data, which we already have in history. Our second goal here, professional development, so by the end of, by the end of December, sixty percent of our PLC leaders will deliver intentional data-driven action oriented or reflective PLCs. By the end of December, sixty percent of our teachers will implement PLC learning, and of course, the outcome is again, by the end of December, fifty percent of our students will show improvement. And our last one, ongoing monitoring and progress monitoring, by the end of December, seventy percent of our PLCs will actively discuss progress monitoring and adjusting practices based on student math data. And by the end of December, sixty percent of the teachers are actively progress monitoring and adjusting their instruction based on the math data. So by the end of December, and our goal is that half of our students should have improved in their math scores. So these are some mild goals that we've looked at, but one, by the first of school, we had, we trained PLCs, coaches, as in, and leading the PLCs. We've trained teachers on Eureka Math, we've trained middle school teachers on Al Online, we've trained administrator, administrative teams on reflective instructional leadership, which is the DAIOT meeting that we had with them. We prepared and delivered extensive instructional leadership meetings, and we were training, we trained teachers on schedule blocks for personalized reading.
By the end of, by October, which is our mid-cycle, so by, by October, we've already administered assessments. Like for example, right now, we're administering the BOY from the state to see where our kids are at. We've already done professional learning days, and that's a schedule for next Monday. And at, by the end of the six weeks, which is by the end of this week, we would administer six weeks exams. And of course, by October, we'll have data analysis on both the BOY, which is the beginning of year assessment from our students, and our first six weeks assessment. So the supports that we have, if you look at that, that's performance management support that circles around project management meetings, alignments across initiatives, and data dashboard supports. So aligned initiatives that we have, we have the E3 Plus grant that we have, Ms. Rivera as our project lead, project coach, are from the gates. We have the high-quality instructional materials, and I'm the lead person on that one, that's for the sixth through eighth grade mathematics, high-quality instructional materials that we offer. We have the ESF with Ms. Idani and Ms. Garza, we have the SAF through Ms. Garza and Ms. Salinas. We're doing the SLO, Student Learning Objectives, with Ms. Nidia Benitez, and that's all tied into our T-test. And of course, the decision to high-quality instructional materials, and that's what we're using right now, Eureka Math for the, for the identified area. And that's the presentation on RSSP. Any questions?
Questions, comments, concerns?
I just want to throw a comment, that new curriculum that you took off for math, I'm hearing some folks raving about it. I think it's the, it's the Eureka Math, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it's a fantastic curriculum.
It sure is, and I think our kids are doing a fantastic job with that. Our teachers are doing a fantastic job learning the new curriculum, and we're providing as much support as possible when it comes to that. So we're really out there and meeting with teachers and also even engaging with the students in the classroom. So it's been a wonderful experience for them so far, which should get us to the new STAR at the end of the school year, this, this 2023.
I finally learned fractions, so. Never too late.
In mathematics, we got to know that in mathematics, there's more than one way to solve a problem. And yes, they derive to one answer, but there's more than one way to derive to that, and I think that's what our kids are learning. And they just love the different strategies that they, they're engaging in and they're learning with this new program.
Ms. Ayala, real quickly, I think what we need to realize is also that STAR exam is changing this coming year.
Yes, sir.
It's not going to be the same exams we've gotten in the last couple of years, so we have to adjust, correct?
Absolutely, it's a brand-new exam, and the beauty of these products is that they've been strategically designed for Texas, so that they can, so that they can model what the new assessment is going to look like in the spring. So all our kids are engaging in these, in these curriculums, and when they do, for example, in Eureka Math, their mid-modules or their module assessments, they mimic the actual exam. And they're given through the platforms that the kids are going to be taking the assessment with. So we're starting already, so there's, there's no going back, everything's online. So our kids, we've been fortunate that we started the online assessment since last year, and this year, we're, we're even ahead of the game, because we're engaging in these products, which are really great products that are getting our kids ready. So now, we're just going to provide that extra support for our teachers, because like anything new, everybody needs a little bit of support.
Of course, of course. Is that it? Don't go too far, because I think you got the next one, right?
Mr. President, if I may, sir.
Yes, Mr. Peña, go ahead.
I'd like to commend our curriculum department, who's done a phenomenal job, a tremendous job, in bringing these grants, you know, to the district, because not everyone received them in the state of Texas. So last year, you know, the curriculum department, we already knew that the new STAR was coming, and they were already looking ahead. So we are blessed to have the grant to help support our district, our curriculum department, and our teachers. So I commend our department for working so hard. If y'all remember, back in May and June, there was a lot of questions by staff. When we bring change, you know, you know that sometimes it's not easy and it's not well taken. But I want to commend our teachers, you know, for supporting these new initiatives. It is a new STAR, so it is the unknown. TA will not give us blueprints till late October, November, so, you know, we don't really know exactly how the new STAR is. But, you know, at this time, I'd like to commend our curriculum department and our teachers, who are doing a fantastic, sensational job getting everybody, you know, our students prepared for the new test. They're adjusting very well. Later this evening, we are going to bring a proposal, how we're going to support our language arts teachers with these new programs and mathematics. In the next few weeks, we will be bringing these teachers together, so that they can work with our curriculum department and provide that needed support. You know, even our strategists, I want to commend our strategists right now, they're going into the classrooms, they're modeling, that's what they were intended for. So tonight, I want to thank our school board for believing in us last year in bringing the strategists to our district, because that's something that we were lacking. You know, now that we have our strategists, you know, they're there, and they guide our teachers, especially the new teachers coming into the field. You know, we are, you know, having a lot of shortages throughout the state and even here, right? So they're doing an awesome job, so I want to commend, you know, everyone in the curriculum department and the whole district. We have a lot of directors that are providing support in their areas as well. So it's, it's given, that's why we are the A district, right? But I commend everyone working together.
Thank you, Ms. Peña, thank you.
There deserves a round of applause. All right, item thirteen, report on preliminary 2022 STAR state accountability rating results.
So this is the report on our preliminary 2022, and I'm calling it preliminary, because we don't get our report card till later on this semester. But just so you can see what our ratings were throughout the school year, and you'll also be able to see why we made certain decisions when it came to RSSP and our focus. Okay, so I want to recap really quickly on 2022. So what they did is TEA changed their testing vendor from ETS to Cambium Pearson in 2021, 2022. So our kids engaged in a brand-new platform last year, considering that they've been testing in a different platform, and not all our kids were testing online. So again, like I said, we're totally ahead of the game, we were able to test online all our children last year, and even with that, we were able to manage getting the growth that we needed, so that we could perform the way we did. The retesting requirements for math and reading in grades five and eight were eliminated. Writing assessments for grades four and seven were also eliminated in 2022, and the limited changes to the design of the assessment occurred. And this was last year for the new version of STAR. So that's why there were all these changes that were occurring, because there's a new test coming around the corner, which is next, next semester. The test process overall went well, however, the vendor on TEA experienced ongoing difficulties in the reporting of the results, just like any brand-new program. We kept, they kept on sending us updates, 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 updates. That's why at the end, we were like, okay, crossing our fingers, let's see what they say, and then they released. But that's how TEA is working at this point, and as far as the vendors that they, they're using for the testing. So they continue reporting, they, TEA continued reporting to the, through the parent portal and the website, and this is one thing that we've shared out. We've also done some, some TEP meetings, and also as much as we can to try to get it out there to the public, how public, all of this is public information. Anybody can go in there and look at their student scores, how they did, what the test looks like, how the kids performed, and how they answered. Paper copies of the results are also available for families at their local campuses. So the test is designed, the test designed in the passing standards, so these are the passing standards, masters, grade level, meets grade level, and that's where we want to be, because that's, that's at grade level, approaches the grade level, and did not meet grade level. So these are the four standards that our students could have gotten. So when we look at the preliminary results here, I'm going to go over the reading third through eighth grade, and I'm going to compare it to the state. So don't be in shock, it's actually really good results, even though the state was a little bit above us, in spite of the pandemic and where we were at. Our kids did very relatively well when it came to their reading assessment. So yes, there were some gaps, but even at that, we had a lot of interruptions due to, like, in January, a lot of our kids did not come in because they were in COVID. But I still think that our kids and our teachers did a fantastic job as far as getting our kids ready for the assessment last spring. So when we look at the elementary scores in reading, and this is compared to 2019 and 2022, at the approaches and meets and masters level. And as you can see, it's not, it's not very far apart, considering that we were pre-pandemic and then post-pandemic. So as you can see, we, our teachers and our students were able to do a fantastic job, like I said, actually meeting the approaches, meets, and masters grade levels, or performance when it came to third grade and fourth grade reading, and it also in the fifth grade reading. If you look at fifth grade reading, even in the masters, they even did a lot better this last spring than in 2020, than in 1920, in 2020, I'm sorry, 1920. And for middle school, as you can see, you can see some gains there in the sixth grade reading, it's very comparable to 2019. And in the meets, we actually surpassed our previous score, pre-pandemic. And if you look at seventh grade, they did even a lot better when it comes to the reading. They managed to score higher than in 2019, pre-pandemic. And in eighth grade, we do see, again, like I said, the, the changes are not that very far off, but we can see a lot of improvement in meets and masters, where we really did a lot better post-pandemic. And in mathematics, this is where we see a little bit of dips, I think this is where it's a little bit, it's off. And I think we had had this discussion sometime back, where a lot of it is due, because a lot of the learning happened online versus in person. And in mathematics, if, you know, if numbers are numbers, and sometimes you need to be in person in order for us to be able to see that, because it is a little abstract. And when it comes to abstract, you need to be in person, so they could really get the full effect of math. And as we can see, when they look, when we go back and look at 2019 and 2022, we see the dips. And this is why we were able to identify that this was the area of need. So our kids were doing well in reading, but in mathematics, they were still struggling. And as you can see, in all the three grade levels in elementary school, they did, they didn't do as well as we did pre-pandemic. And the same thing goes for our, our middle school math, as you can see, we were also struggling there, so we were, we were a little far off behind. And therefore, that's why we identified mathematics to still be the area of need and the area that we need to concentrate on with our students. And in science, as you can see, our science scores were not that far off when it comes to the state. And Rio Grande City, when it came to the actual STAR test for fifth and eighth, and when we look at, when we compare it, pre and post-pandemic, again, we do see some dips, but of course, the area that was the strongest dip was again in mathematics. And for eighth grade social studies, as you can see, we're not that far off from the state for this past school year. And in pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, we actually did better in the approaches grade level when it came to the eighth grade social studies this past school year. And our end-of-course exams, as you can see, that we were not very far off from the state, and actually, we surpassed the state. And these are our kids that took the high school test, Algebra I, Biology, English I, English II, and US History. And I have to say, our eighth grade students that also took Algebra I. And I'm happy to say that we beat the state, at least in one of the subject areas, mathematics. It's funny how we're struggling in the lower grades, but actually, in the freshman level, they did very well, and they actually beat the state by quite a bit. So we're really proud of that. So these is our first-time test takers, I'm giving you the data of our true, our, our kids taking the test for the very first time. And as you can see, for the approaches, meets, and masters, how well we scored compared to 2019 and 2022. We actually did really well, or, you know, and when it comes to the meets and masters, our scores are right there where we needed to be post-pandemic. And then, of course, in the approaches, we did a lot better than we did pre-pandemic. And in biology, we do see a little bit of dips here when it came to 2019 and 2022, but they're not that far off, they still did very well. Our English I and English II, as you can see, in 2019, pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, we did do a lot better in English I and in English II for the first-time test takers. So these are our true freshmen and our true 10th graders taking the exam for the first time, not including the repeaters. Okay, so this is the majority of our students taking the exam. And for US History, the same thing, these are our true 11th graders taking the test. So we were able to maintain right up there with it when it came to our pre-pandemic scores. On state accountability, so there's three, it's a three-domain system, so we do the best achievement, progress, that's, that counts 70%. And then the closing the gap is 30%, student achievement or school progress, the better of the two is what we count, and then, of course, closing the gap. So yay, overall rating, we have an overall rating of an A. So as you can see, in our student achievement and our school progress, we did get 94 points out of 100 for school progress, so we use that as the 70%. And that gave us the edge over, so that we could get those 90 points out of 100, so that that way we could, our school district could score that A. And this is the first time ever, so we're really proud, as you can see, the improvements have been there, even though we're a little bit, we dip in some areas, but we make up in others. And I just want to say congratulations to everybody, and thank you guys for believing in us and the work that we're doing. So these were our campus ratings, all our campuses scored an A or a B, we only had one C campus. And that we had the distinction designations, and I'm practically saying, for example, Rio Grande City High School actually got all seven distinctions. And this is the second time that Rio Grande City High School gets the distinctions. The first time was under the leadership of Mr. Adolfo Peña, and now it's under the leadership of Mr. Jorge Peña. But as you can see, that we got distinctions in mathematics for Rio High, Gruia High, and Ringo Elementary. For English Language Arts, Rio High, Dr. Mario Ramirez Elementary. In science, Rio High, Early College, Ringo Elementary. And social studies, Rio High and Ringo Middle School. Top 25 comparative academic growth, Rio High, Gruia High, and Ringo Elementary. Post-secondary readiness, Rio High, Early College, Ringo Elementary. And top 25% comparative closing the gaps, Rio High, Gruia High, Gruia Elementary, and Ringo Elementary. So those were our distinction designations, and that's it.
Mr. President, members of the board, community, once again, we want to thank everyone who had a great part in making history, once again, here in Rio Grande City, Gruia ISD, for the first time ever getting an A-rated district. Now, do know and take note that only one-third of school districts in the state of Texas receive this honor. So it was not very easy for everyone to receive it, but, you know, our district did. So we commend, you know, our students, our parents, for believing in our educational system and working hard. You know, our expectations are high, and we want all of our students to be successful. So sometimes, some students need more help than others, so we are here as a district to provide that assistance. We want to thank the classroom teachers, the teacher raids, the custodians, maintenance, you know, our principals who work day in and day out to reach these levels of success. You know, it's not easy, it's hard work, dedication, so we commend Central Office for all the support, you know, everyone together, and of course, our school board, who believed in our educational system, who believed in our employees, who believed in our students, to reach these high levels of success. So thank you all from the bottom of our heart to everyone, everyone in our community, you know, for this huge honor, thank you.
On that note, I will say the celebration on Friday night was a true success. I know it's Friday night, you know, but still, I think everyone enjoyed it, it was for a good cause. A lot of us said out, you know, we spoke out there that this is a reflection on you, we're not going to sit here and raise our collar and think we did this. You know, do we have a hand, do we enact policies, do we guide, do we have our, our vision? Yes, but if the school, through the superintendent, through the administration, if it's not carried out, it doesn't happen. So don't think it's lost on us that the work has been done, we're very, very proud of everybody. The only bad thing about that is now, is now we know what you can do. So we expect it every year, and there's improvement to be made in some areas, so hey, it's never, enough is never enough when it comes to academics and educating our children. So again, congratulations, we look forward to more, we really do, and we'll be here to help and guide and do our part in support of you all. So thank you so very much. I don't know if anybody else wants to say a few words?
I want to thank you all for everything that you all do, and, you know, with, it's everyone here, those that are not here. It takes a lot of work to get to this point, and, you know, again, I said a little while ago, nobody realizes what you do in the back of what you all are doing to make this happen. So thank you all very much, and, you know, you all are doing God's work, and it just, that's what we leave for tomorrow, so really appreciate it, thank you. I think you guys have said it all, I mean, we can't thank you guys enough.
I think you, like you say, you said it all, but really and truly, you all did fantastic. It takes every single person to make a tremendous success, every single person. Analogy once given to me is you have a table with four legs, you take one leg, that table falls. Well, you only, you held that table straight up, and like Mr. Peña was saying, every single one of you, every single one, from custodians to administrators to teachers, you all did a fantastic job, and the hard part now is, how do we keep it going? Good luck.
Mr. Velasquez, any words?
Thank you, thank you guys, thank you very much for everything that you do.
Thank you very much for everything that you do for our kids. I mean, it's a, it's just an honor, like Mr. Peña said. Hopefully, we can figure something out, Mr. Peña, in December to reward them, every single, every single employee.
We have a plan, sir.
All right.
It's up to, up to you, Aldo.
Thank you.
There's some discussion to be had first, but guess. I was hoping nobody would say that.
Eliezar, Mr. Peña is one, one step ahead of everybody. So he already had that plan a long, long ago.
That's great. I was a, una, un niño de aquí de Río Grande. Hoy mi hijo el papá, hoy mi hijo pues tienes esto gracias por esto gracias por todo efectivo apalice efectivo. Por eso, thank you very much, and hopefully, we can reward them with.
That's the, that's the plan. That's the plan.
All right, Mrs. Kowat, anything else?
Thank you all again. They've said it all. But we do want to say that we trust in you. You know, you know that I'm new here, and I am honored to be here and to see all of this in my time. And hopefully, I will continue to work with you all in the future. And I, I expect that you will do very well. Thank you so much, everybody.
Mr. Pope, on Zoom.
I apologize that I cannot be there, but I just want to say thank you to everybody. And, you know, everybody's a key essential part to this success. And without one person, like Velazquez says, without one, this table would fall. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Item 14, report on teacher incentive allotment. Mrs. Peña.
Good evening, President of the Board, Board members, Mr. Peña, general public. I'm here. I'm very excited to announce that the teacher incentive allotment was approved. We submitted our application at the end of last year. We worked on this application all year, setting up systems and things that were needed in order for us to qualify. The application is based on two main components, which is the teacher observation and the student growth. So this coming year is step two. It's actually a two-year process. This year is our data capture year, so we are very excited. We have to set up other systems in place, but we are very positive that this is going to go through. So what is a teacher incentive allotment? It is the opportunity for our teachers to receive monetary compensation, efectivo, like Mr. for their hard work. There are three levels. There, there, the levels are recognized, exemplary, and masters. And the teachers have to qualify in order to receive this monetary compensation for five years. Once they qualify, they continue receiving it for five years. And because we are, are economically disadvantaged and, and the at-risk populations are so high in our district, our teachers qualify for the higher of the spectrum. So that, that's very positive. We just wanted to share that information with you and with the public. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ma'am, the, the only question I have is, I want to congratulate everybody in our district because we're getting monies from federal monies, from career technology, from, from curriculum. You all have done a fantastic job in finding monies for us. So, and at the end of the day, the monies go to who? The, the, the teachers and the children. But you've done a fantastic job, all of you have done a fantastic job in achieving and getting more funds for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Item 15, report on Texas COVID learning acceleration supports, TCLAS updates by decision for 2022, 2023.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Ramirez, members of the board, and Mr. Peña, and everyone that is present today. With T-Class, we do have a set of funding, additional funding and resources that have come our way through TEA. And we'll start with decision number one. I'll give just a very short synopsis. I know that Mrs. Ayala already presented on the RSSP, and basically, that is 1A. And 1A has to do with our strategic planning. It's been complete for the, for the year 2022, 23, and we are in the year of the implementation phase. We just had our mid-cycle step back with TEA back on Thursday, the 15th. And then, 1B, why I am the data fellow. So my job is hopefully to strengthen the culture or the data culture of our district with my job and my teachings and my learning. On decision two, we want, we want to welcome, earlier, you guys mentioned about the Eureka Math. We do want to welcome, of course, our new strategy, sorry, not our new strategy, strategies that became new math and our literacy coaches. And our literacy coaches, we have two, Ms. Rubiola Klein and Mrs. Cindy Solis. And in math coaches, now we have Mrs. Monica Peña and Mr. Rafael Velazquez. And these four individuals were strategists, but basically, they got transitioned into these roles. So our, our literacy coaches are now on board. And by that, it means that on decision two, they provide job-related embedded coaching and feedback support for our teachers as they implement their products. On decision three, there's just two short mentions. On the 3C, we have what we call the decodable textbooks. And these books are offering a phonics program for our little ones, K through 1. And Mrs. Arizola has basically already completed the distribution of those materials through all the campuses. So we are helping our little ones as well. And then, in our Disexa platform tool, we also have this free product that came through TEA, and it's been implemented by our, our students who are being serviced in the Disexa program, K through 5. Mrs. Marissa Garcia and Mrs. Monica are the leads there. On decision four, we have a MOU for our candidates, and we've awarded a think three, Dr. Salinas believe three, two, one in, in August, and two today, hopefully. And that means that if they've kept with their MOU timeline, they're able to be awarded for their certificate of completion and their certification. Non-class related, but we do want to announce that on cycle six, we now have a, a new opportunity for application, and that is grow your own. And a committee will be holding a meeting next week so we can start the application process. Our HR Director, Mr. Salinas or Dr. Salinas, and our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Mrs. Morris, along with the committee, will plan to apply for this new cycle. It is non-T class, but still is a great opportunity. I think that with T-Class, we learn the process and we learn how to work with the, with the, with the steps, and that helps us a lot. On decision six, we're able to hire six day tutors, and our selected tutor resources include K through 8 Book Nook and K through 8 Math, or Zern Math, sorry. And these are all, of course, TKS-based programs for math and for language. Mrs. Virginia Gonzalez and Ms. Yanita Guntu are the leads on that decision. And then, the last one is number 11. That one was outside of the 1 through 10, and it came as a bonus, so we, we applied for it. Thank you, Elsa, Morris. But it's been a lot of fun, a lot of learning, and we have Mrs. Jessica Science, Teran Science, who is our coordinator for after-school programs. But along with her and other supervisors, we have one full supervisor after school. We've been able to start a, five campuses were able to start an after-school program under T-Class 11. And this is called the High Quality After School. And these are Alberto, Encelia Barrera, Alton Bonito, John and Olive Vinojosa, General Sanchez, and Roque Guerra Jr. Elementary. And basically, like Mrs. Ayala explained, our data shows where we need the help, and where we need the help are those campuses for now, and also thinking about accountability ahead. Okay? So I respectfully submit for the board just for information on T-Class.
Thank you so much.
Any questions that you may have, I'm sure. Good money.
Congratulations again. More efectivo, like somebody said.
Thank you.
All right. Section six, recommending approving the consent agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items. All the items below that are not called out will be approved by consent. The first item in the consent agenda is consider to take possible action on donations to Rio Grande City, Gruia ISD. Second item is consider to take possible action on tax refunds for the month of August 2022. Do I have a motion or any discussion on the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda, which would be item one and two, as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vardial to approve items one and two. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. All his favors are signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action item number three, discussion, consideration, and possible action to deed the RGC GISD Ringo Park to Rio Grande City. Before I begin to any discussion, I've been informed that four board members will be abstaining from this vote. They've submitted their executed conflict of interest forms that will leave away three board members consisting of myself, Mr. Velazquez, and Mrs. Kowat to vote on this item. Mr. Peña, you want to proceed with discussion on this, on this item?
Yes, sir. The item here this evening is consider to take possible action to deed the RGC GISD Ringo Park to Rio Grande City. At this time, I'd like to say and thank that, you know, the great city of Rio Grande. Thank them for this awesome partnership that we're working together as one, you know, for the common goal of our students and our community, moving our city, our district forward for years and years to come. So this deeding of the property at Fort Ringo Park, which is behind Dairy Queen, will be coming over in a few minutes. We'd like for the mayor to come up and the city commissioners so we can go through this process. This property will be exchanged for the land at St. Ives, that is a property around the Whataburger towards the back. We will be exchanging property so we can build our Rio Grande City, Gruia ISD Performing Arts Center. So that will be located behind the safety building where the city will be building. It'll be located in that area. And that is between Rio Grande City High School and Gruia High School, the center of our community, of our district. So it's a perfect location. So on behalf of our school district, the city of Rio Grande, mayor, commissioners, we want to thank you for, you know, joining this endeavor together. You know, our, once we build these facilities there, wow, we're moving our city where we dream it'll be there one day. Can you imagine having performing arts centers there? You know, plays, bringing our state competitions, regional competitions for mariachi, for concert band? You know, we are building a facility, one of a kind, that, you know, our students will not have to travel away, you know, having to travel to Harlingen to record for their performances. We're going to have it in our own backyard. So we are very, very excited about this endeavor with the city of Rio Grande.
Thank you. With that being said, I move to approve item three as discussed. Do I have a second to that motion?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Kowat. I know there's four members abstaining. So all those in favor are so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, let the record reflect that I'm abstaining.
Yes. The abstentions are for Mr. Vardial, Mr. Peña, Mr. Noi Castillo, and Mr. John Pope. With that being said, I don't want to leave the city council out. I know Mr. Vardial is dying to say a few words and, and give us a quote or two, but mayor, come on, city, I know you've got city commissioners, Rodrigo Olivares, Mr. Ramirez, you're more than welcome to say a few words if you'd like. I'm waiting for the quote.
Hey, the proverbial, "I will not take long." I always wait for that one. But of course, Commissioner Olivares, Commissioner Ramirez, and really, we want to thank the school board, because the reality is that history will reflect the significance of this day as a catalyst for a continued partnership and collaboration, that it's only for the betterment of our community and for our future generations and leaders of tomorrow. And yes, as Mr. Velazquez mentioned to his point, going back to what he said about, "Necesito son billetes." And what that means obviously is that you need to make an investment, and the investment is there. And this investment will go a long ways, a long ways for our community. And that, as you mentioned, the Performing Arts Center. And if we're looking at also as far as a recreational center, a river view as well. So there's a lot in the next four years, Rio Grande City and the surrounding communities will be transformed because of these partnerships, these collaborations. Because when you have taxing entities pulling their resources, only great things can happen. So thank you to our school board, distinguished school board, Mr. Peña, Dr. Salinas, Mr. Salazar, and everyone that's part of this in our community, right? Because at the end of the day, the community benefits. And it's incredible, the, the path that we're getting to, and we're going to see in the very near future. So yes, to quote Henry Ford, which is, "Coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is progress, and working together is success," which is the reality of what we are doing here today and future. So again, congratulations, and thank you for having that vision, that we are working together, and it is a great partnership, the city, the school district, working together for what? For our future generations and leaders of tomorrow. And yes, this park, by the way, today is a historical day. This park will have soccer fields, volleyball courts, beach volleyball. We'll have the basketball, the baseball, softball, and as well as the track, or should I say, more of, of walking trails? So there's a lot coming to Rio Grande City, and of course, the performing arts, as we were mentioning, and other projects that we have in mind too. So cannot say enough, thank you so much for taking on this, this vision, taking on this initiative to collaborate and work in unison for the betterment of our community, and cannot stress that enough. And progress and prosperity abound at every turn. So with that, on behalf of the great city of Rio Grande City, thank you, school board members. Thank you to our community. Thank you to everyone that made this possible. Congratulations. Thank you once again. Great things are coming to Rio Grande City and Rio Grande City, Gruia ISD.
Item number four, consider to take possible action on request for use of school facilities for the Rio Grande City Parks and Recreation Department to use school district's fields for 2022 Pee Wee football league season. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item number?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item four, five, six, seven, eight, as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vardial to approve items four through eight. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion required in any of those items? There being none, all those in favor are so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
I will log an extension, an extension on item four.
With an extension noted by Mr. Jay Peña on item four. Item number nine, consider to take possible action on notice from business owner to have a business license as an alcoholic beverage retailer. But from, at the advice of council, I think we've been, I guess, advised to reject this request until the, until it's been petitioned to the city and the city has approved that request. Is that correct, Mr. Rosas?
That's correct.
I'll, I'll motion to table item nine.
There's a motion by Mr. Peña to table item nine. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor are so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign.
Mr. President, just for the record, I am abstaining on item number nine.
Abstaining, okay. With a note from Mr. Vardial abstaining to item number nine. Item 10, consider to take possible action on pay application number one for Joar Sanchez Stadium parking lot and adjacent areas, paving overlay payable to JF Trenching and Paving Construction LLC. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item 10?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21.
There's a motion by Mr. Vardial to approve items 10 through 21.
What? With the addendum on item 21.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? I know there's a couple of items, so if you all need to take some time on them, let me know.
Good evening. There is also an addendum for item 12, changing the pay application.
Do you want to amend your motion, Mr. Vardial?
Yes, let me amend the motion as Mrs. Robles just mentioned to do what?
Amend. Amend, uh, amend to item twelve.
The amount on the pay application under item twelve of the addendum.
Revise the amount on item twelve as Ms. Robles, I want to amend that motion.
Okay, there's amended motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second to amended motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Escobar, is there any discussion required in any of those items?
I'll be abstaining.
Mr. Castillo will be abstaining to item seventeen.
One second.
All right, give you a little bit of time.
I will log an extension to item seven, an extension to item seventeen as well.
Okay, Mr. Peña, Jay Peña will be abstaining to item seventeen as well. With that to be noted, all those, there's an amended motion by Mr. Vareal, it was seconded by Mrs. Escobar. All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand.
Subject to abstentions.
Subject to abstentions, motion carries. Item number twenty-two, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following. We have three, we have RFP twenty-two dash eighteen for district-wide pest control services, RFP twenty-three oh seven, child nutrition program consultant services, RFP number twenty-three oh eight, fresh produce for child nutrition program. So a motion, any discussion on item twenty-two?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twenty-two as presented in our board packet with the recommendations of each individual department on these.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal, do I have a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña, is there any discussion required? There being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-three, consider and take possible action on 2022, 2023 Strong Foundations Framework Development Grand Cycle Number One. Is there a motion, any discussion on item twenty-three?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve items twenty-three through thirty-one, is that correct?
Yes.
Through thirty-one.
Through thirty-two.
Thirty-two, I'm sorry, through thirty-two. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Second by Mr. Peña, is there any discussion or time required for review? There being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item thirty-three, consider and take possible action on Texas COVID Learning Acceleration Supports, TCLAS, High Quality After-School Staff Development. Do I have a motion, any discussion on item thirty-three?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve items thirty-three through forty-seven. Do I have a second to that motion?
A second.
Second by Mr. Peña, is there any discussion required in any particular item or some time for review? All right, there being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item forty-eight, consider and take possible action on request from Career and Technical Education, CTE Department to offer Principles of Health and Science course in middle school level. Do I have a motion, any discussion on item forty-eight?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve item forty-eight through fifty-six. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Second by Mr. Castillo.
Mr. President, a little discussion that we, I could?
Yes, of course, Mr. Vareal.
Okay, basically, I just would like to say a couple of things. Basically, like I've said, we have an early college that provides sixty hours that translates to forty thousand dollars. We have, uh, we pay for all books, for all tuition, for all testing. We have career and college advisors. We have after tutorial programs that are financed by our federal programs. We have free lunch. We have dual enrollment, again, that we pay for everything. But sometimes I think we take for granted, not for granted, but people on the outside need to really understand that we do a lot of work here. And I'm just gonna go through a litany of things that we have. And sometimes people need to understand the outside population that there really is a lot of stuff going on in RGCG ISD. And it's gonna take me just one minute, it's a lot of stuff, but I'll read it. Veterans Middle School, robotic touch systems, business information management, computer keyboarding, college and career readiness of Veterans Middle School ACE Program, math tutorials, art crafts classes, reading tutorials, academy, canvas painting, computer keyboarding classes, health, fitness, culinary arts, decor, design, computer animation, Ringo Middle School Basic BM, again, the basic information, college career readiness, building trades, robotics, ACE Ringo Middle School Clay Sculptures, Art Craft, decorations, building trades, health, fitness, sports, science academies, Twikandol for people, I guess, who want to defend themselves. In career and technology, in the Gruya High School, we have cosmetology, STEM engineering, barbering, BMI, audiovisual nursing program, welding, collision repair, criminal justice, culinary arts, building trades, speech, animal science through FFA. In the ACE Program at Gruya High School, we have AP Government Physics Academy, homework help, English Academy, building trades, culinary arts conjunto, which is nice, AP Government, they performed the other day at El Grito from the city, English film documentary, Gruya Middle School College Career Readiness, touch screen systems, building trades. In Gruya Middle Schools, we have drone classes, of which Mr. Velazquez's son, I think, participated one time. And he told me they were quite good. Math classes, culinary arts, wood shop, arts and crafts classes, reading. At the Rio Grande City High School, we have dual enrollment for position manufacturing, BM, basic information things, cosmetology, criminal justice, culinary arts, building trades, model engine repairs, auto collision repairs, animal science, engineer, manufacturing technologies, professional communication, audiovisual, college readiness and skills, Principles of Health and Science, CNAs, welding classes, medical technology, professional communication, dual enrollment, computer maintenance, EKGs and barbering. And all I'm trying to say that all of you do a fantastic job. We have programs coming from the federals, career technologies from curriculum, and sometimes we take for granted. And people, I, you know, I'm so proud of, you know, the after-school programs that we pay for every single book, we pay for every single test, we do all these things, that we have after-school programs, that we go and feed the kids, not only at lunchtime, but we go feed the kids, correct me if I'm wrong, after school, we provide lunches for them. And that's a fantastic, I know sometimes they even have Saturday tutorials. So to all of you, great job, keep it up, thank you.
One thing I wanted to elaborate with what Basilio said on, you know, the different things that the kids get educated on. And one of them, around Rio Grande, you see a lot of barber shops popping up left and right. And those are our students. And I get calls from teachers, I mean, not from teachers, from parents, and say, "What happened to the Gruya Barber School?" You know, it's not there. And I said, "Well, I'm just barely coming in, let me get acquainted." But this is an awesome thing that's happening. And if people on the outside don't see it, we do, and the community does also. And I want to thank you all, everybody that is a contributor to all this, different things that our, our district is doing for the students. I mean, it's a fantastic thing because, I mean, kids that cannot go to college or anything, they get the education here. And it is awesome to see them strive. And they don't charge very little, let me tell you, because I take my son to one of those places. I mean, but they make their money and they become professionals. It's awesome, it's an awesome feeling, really. I'm gonna speak on that aspect.
Well, the Barber School's still open in La Gruya, there's no doubt about it.
It is, okay.
And I gotta add, I was so disappointed that you did not add chess. I'm still looking for the chess club. And then also, but there was one important program that just popped up. And this is within the spirit of embracing trade schools and other options that are available to folks. And we have some really successful local business folks who have partnered up with the school in STC for, if I'm not mistaken, it's for the CDLs, for the eighteen-wheelers. And that was something that we left out, which is really important, really awesome, so.
All right, on that emphatic note, I'll call further. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries, I think, thank you, Mr. Pope. All right, item fifty-seven, consider and take possible action on Sanchez Stadium Field House Final Plans. Do I have, do I have a motion, any discussion on item fifty-seven?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five as presented in our board packet with any addendums and any, 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 with any addendums and any corrections as presented.
Okay, so I'm starting to, people like, "Check this on and hurry this." And hurrying the agenda. I'm getting, I'm sensing a pattern here.
Mr. President, I'm gonna be honest with you, I thank our administration and everybody does a wonderful job. And it is, I went through this packet for about three hours, I looked at it, and they do a fantastic job. That's why I come, I trust them when I do all these things kind of quickly. Because they, they represent us well, all these people do.
Goodness, I've said that any better. And I can tell you that all these board members do the same thing. They, they've come prepared, you don't have to tell them a whole lot, they're ready. So when we ask questions, you can tell by the questions that are being asked that they're knowledgeable questions.
Unless they want us to go one by one, we start all over again, sir.
They're not general vague questions, they've been studied and reviewed. So that's why, that's why I don't mind when he, when he does that. Or, you know, something I do give a little time just in case. But there's a motion by Mr. Vareal to approve items fifty-seven through sixty-five. Second by Mr. Castillo, in a hurry, any discussion needed on any particular item? No, all right, Mr. Peña, you look like?
Yes, I'd like to, because we did have a workshop earlier, sir, so if I may?
On what item, sir?
Well, just in general.
On, well, I'll start with fifty-seven.
Okay.
Okay, earlier this evening, Mr. President, we had a workshop with the school board. And we had our architect, our engineers here. And, you know, for those of them joining us in Facebook and the community, you know, I'd like just to reiterate a little bit of it. We did bring, or, you know, right now to the board, our final plans for Joar Sanchez Stadium Field House. We're gonna renovate. Those of you who have visited our field house and our football field, first of all, you know, I want to congratulate Mr. Ramirez and everyone working together to renovate our Joar Sanchez Stadium. You know, it's long overdue and it's looking beautiful. So once we go ahead and continue with the field house, which our athletes really deserve, and the facilities around there, you know, it's gonna be state of the art. So, you know, on that one itself. Then also on the fifty-nine, looking at the tracks for Gruya High School, refurbishing those, Ringo Middle School refurbishing. And finally, finally, Veterans Middle School will get their track. So, you know, these are great projects going on. We are bringing to the board for approval right now and the delivery of method, how we're gonna be bidding them out as well.
Very good points.
The last one.
Multi-purpose, maybe?
Yeah, multi-purpose. We also discussed the progress of our multi-purpose center, it's on schedule. You know, there were some items that were discussed earlier. And we are, one item, we are looking for a change order. I'd like to reiterate this one is the freight cost of the tile. Because of the terrazzo-like tile that we went, that is long, more durable, that will last a long time for our facility there. And a recommendation from our architect, we went ahead and are asking the board tonight to, you know, where's our, it's a twelve thousand dollar cost to bring that, that was not in the bid. So our cost share, we agreed with the company to do half, so our share would be six thousand dollars.
So the company's paying half and we're paying half?
So, and that's about it, sir.
Let me ask you a quick question.
Yes, sir.
That street that got cement on, that's beautiful street, and Mr. Marine had a, and all of it had a lot to do with the project. But does that street have a name or no, sir? Does it have a name?
We'll research it, sir. We'll research it. If not, you all will.
No, no, I'm just, I'm thinking, I wanna, does it have a name?
I thought it did. It is, right? Okay, I know it, I know it has, yeah.
Okay, I'm just saying it would be nice to put a big sign on it identifying it's whatever it is. Because it's a beautiful street.
Because they had the city, they had the historic sign. I think it had a street name, but I just can't remember. I think it might be.
We'll research it and present.
Okay.
But now that you bring up the street as well, sir, it's changed the facade of our fort there in the parade field. So we commend the board for approving all of these projects. That one is about, I would say ninety percent complete, they're still working on it, that's not final. We did have to pause because of our Fort Ringo, historic Fort Ringo celebration last week, but they will continue with the construction there. As well as right in front of ACE Elementary. You know, parents will very soon have a nice driveway there instead of bumping their way into school, so.
Yes. Ringo Avenue.
Real close.
Ringo Avenue.
We'll put up signs.
Yeah, put it up, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And on that note, I also want to acknowledge and recognize and thank Ms. Gina Gonzalez for the submission for the approval for the district improvement plan and the other accompanying plans. I know how much of a beast that plan is, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
All right, any other comments, discussions? All right, there's a motion by Mr. Vareal, it was seconded by Mr. Castillo, all in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. On that note, the board will convene in closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero seven one through five-five-one point zero seven six and five-five-one point zero two to five-five-one point zero eight four. The time is seven thirty-six PM. We convene, we are, we convene back in open session. We have section eight before we proceed with any action items. Mr. Peña, I know you have a little bit of announcement.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, staff, community. We would like to announce after, you know, consideration deliberation with the school board. And thanks to Ms. Robles for analyzing our financial status. You know, we presented to the board this evening a possible stipend for our employees. So as we discussed this this evening, we brought up, you know, the different reasons why we feel all of our employees deserve a stipend, you know, soon throughout this semester, right? So we looked at, you know, coming after COVID and knowing that the teachers and staff in the entire Rio Grande City Gruya ISD came back strong. You know, we were the first, one of the first school districts last year to come back in January during the pandemic. You know, valuing that and looking also at how hard everyone worked to get the District A first time ever in the history of our district. You know, all employees, from the cafeteria workers, maintenance, you know, everyone working together as a, as a family. You know, we wanted to go ahead and present this. Also looking at the great sensational job of our employees and teachers and campus administration, bringing our students back, but not only bringing them back, but making sure that they're in school every single day. You know, our teachers, our truancy officers, our principals, you know, most of you already know the way I am, so our expectations are always high. So every day, you know, we're looking at our students and how many are back and, you know, are they safe? Are we working with our students to make sure we reach the level of success? So, you know, we were proposing this evening to give a stipend for our staff. So based on the recommendation of our A financial rating staff, Ms. Robles and her staff, looking at our financial stability right now, looking at our students coming back and our campuses working hard on making sure our students attend school daily, which that's gonna be the key, guys, you know, that we continue to have a great year this year. So we know that you're gonna continue working hard for that District A. You're gonna continue hard getting, making sure our students come to school on a daily basis. So looking at all that, you know, we are proposing a thousand dollars for all employees. And five hundred dollars for permanent subs and five hundred dollars for tutors. So that is the recommendation that we have this evening. And we are looking for it to be paid before the Thanksgiving break.
Mr. Peña, let me. Mr. Peña, I think we have to remind everybody just how hard it is sometimes to come up with extra funds to reward employees. You know, we have a lot of employees in nineteen hundred, eighty, nineteen eighty-four. And if it was up to us, we'd give them everything in the world, as much as they'd like, as much as they'd want to, as much as they deserve. But we're trustees for a reason. We're called trustees because part of being a trustee is make sure that we ensure the integrity of the financial rating, the integrity of the education, the stability of the district. And there's so much that goes into it. into it. And again, you know, we want to always give as much as we can, but there was a two thousand dollar raise given in August, and now, and now this additional stipend that should be in everybody's bank accounts and hands by Thanksgiving, if I'm not mistaken. And again, this is just our way of, one, rewarding everyone for all the work that Mr. Peña said, but number two, also being trustees of the district to make sure that we're financially stable, that we're secure, and that we're trusted in every decision that we're making. It's not always the hardest, it's not always the easiest. Sometimes we have to make those decisions. But I'm very happy with, with the decision that we reached in, in executive session. Thank you to Mrs. Robles, Mr. Guerra. They bring up us different options, and they can tell you there's only so many readily available resources. There's only so much money that we can use without putting at risk something somehow, some, something is school distributed when it comes to finances, because we have to account. When it comes to that raise that you got, that two thousand dollar raise, that's a raise we continue to pay every single year after this. It's not a one-time thing. So, it's one of those things where if it was up to us, trust me, we'd give you more. But I'm very happy with the ability to do this with the resources and the funds available to us. And again, they deserve so much more, but I'm glad we can do this for Thanksgiving. I'm not sure if any, Mr. Varela, Peña, anyone wants to say additional words?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, to congratulate really the district and the community that we're in a very, very special and crucial point in time where we are seeing some exponential growth. And at the same time, that's one of the reasons why a lot of the decisions that I made have to be prudent decisions and have to be patient decisions. But at the same time, I think we're in a time, we're in a time and a place where it's, it's awesome. We're seeing awesome growth. I think that there's great things to come, and I think this is a wonderful step forward. And I applaud everybody for all their hard work and efforts. And, and, and I'd just like to extend that thank you and congratulations to everybody. I mean, there's so much, so much to point out.
And for the record, this was a discussion before Mr. Velazquez brought it up.
Yeah.
He brought it up, and nobody else said anything, because it was supposed to be a surprise. But Mr. Velazquez beat us to it a little bit there.
Well, on my, on my behalf, I just want to say, first of all, let me thank Ms. Robles. I know she worked real hard on her budget. Like Adolfo was saying, she's an A-rated, not only A-rated in academics, but A-rated in business, and she did a fantastic job. But it's like Jay's saying, what we gave this year was a two thousand dollar raise, not a stipend, a raise. Now, we gave a thousand dollar stipend. And like I keep telling people, we invest not only in our employees, we invest in our children. I keep going back to the early college, you know, where we provide many, many, many type of great things for kids. We have the magnet schools, both of elementary and middle school, and we have an alternative center. And like I keep telling everybody, we've made a great investment in children. Had we just taken that money and put it over in our coffers, we'd have a lot more money. But the fact of the matter, it's a balance of children and our adults. And I'm very proud of everybody and all the work. I mentioned some programs today, and I could have probably mentioned another four or fifty that I given the, the time. But thank you to every single, every single employee of our school district. They're really the people who make us great. So, again, on my behalf, to every single employee in our district, thank you very much. And like a good friend of mine says, efectivo mil dólares, one thousand dollars. That's all I have to say.
Inefectivo. Mr. Castillo. Mr. Castillo?
Yes, I want to thank everybody, every employee, staff, Mr. Peña, again, the board, Ms. Robles back there. I know she stresses with the numbers because it's a big responsibility. And I said it earlier, I said it twice, and I'll say it again. You know, a lot of people don't realize what it takes to run a machine of this size, and it is, it is a big one. And, you know, to keep it well-greasing going the way it has, and, and you're getting an A rating in finance and the rate, A-rating district, you know, that's not an easy test to do in the time y'all did it with COVID and everything else. So, you know, a lot of y'all lost family members as, as well as I did. And y'all keep, kept managing to keep it up. And I really thank you all from the bottom of my heart for that. And you all continue to do a good job. You know, it's never going to be easy, but you do it from the heart. That's why it works. So, thank you all very much for everything you do on a daily basis.
Amen. Mrs. Escobar?
Yes. To everybody, I would like to just say that you all deserve what's coming. And to every single employee, I, I want to say thanks from the bottom of my heart. And I think the board members, the rest already said it all. You all are an asset to our district, and I really, really appreciate you. Thank you.
I'm going to give, he has a nickname of El Efectivo.
Efectivo.
El Efectivo. Go ahead, sir. You have the floor.
Well, everything, everything has been said. Thank you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate that you do. And congratulations. Hopefully, this stipend can be helpful in this time of inflation, gas prices and everything. So, thank you very much.
The great thing, they're going to be able to have a great Christmas. They're going to be able to go to Black, what is it, Black Thursday or Friday and have a thousand dollars to shop, so.
It's a one-time payment by Thanksgiving. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Ms. Robles, correct? Okay. All right. Thank you all again so much. Okay, going back to the session items, executive session items. Do I have a motion on item A?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item A, B, and C, and D as discussed in executive session. There may be some people with some abstentions.
Yes, there's, has been informed that on item D, Mr. Jay Peña, trustee Elizabet Velazquez and trustee Noi Castillo will be abstaining. With that noted, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign with the, with the, subject to, to the abstentions, motion carries. Do I have a motion on item E?
That's just closing. I don't think we need a motion, do we?
No action required? Okay, there's no action required on item E. I apologize. Do I have a, is there a motion?
I think it's the end of the meeting, sir.
All right. On that end, we adjourn on that positive note. It is eight fifty-nine PM. The meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you all so very much again.
I'll leave you with one word, sir. Mil dólares.